A week ago about um. Him only being, only able to take one kid. I'm like, welcome to my life.
Women can do that.
We can, but we can teach you, we can teach you, and you can maybe take two.
To a ballgame.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kappa Grossup.
Here.
Commissioner Livermore.
Here.
Commissioner Nettleton.
Here.
Commissioner Rondo.
Here.
Commissioner Seabird.
Here.
Pledge allegiance. One unlegitimate civil right of the United States of America in two republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Read public comment, I don't see it happening. Agenda, they got any? Anything they want to change on the agenda? For good. We'll just accept the agenda as printed.
Second up.
Roll call.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yes.
Livermore.
Yep.
Nettleton.
Yes.
Rondo.
Yep.
Seabird.
Yes. Number six, Matt from Soil Conservation asked to postpone till next month. Questions on that?
I got, no, two left comments. Under nine.
Yep.
That's on action.
Um, I think we should make an action for opponent.
Move to both pain. Don't Matt walkies, hold on the tape over the.
That way.
Alright, I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yeah.
Livermore.
Yep.
Nettleton.
Yes.
Rondo.
Yep.
Seabird.
Yes. You said my consent agenda, anybody got anything on the consent agenda that you want us? Any wise poll or talk vote? I think we should talk about A. Anybody else got anything?
Move that we accept items B through N on the consent agenda.
I'll support that. Roll call.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yes.
Livermore.
Yes.
Nettleton.
Yes.
Rondo.
Yes.
Seabird.
Yes. I'll go with the A.
Okay, if you're, if you're talking about us going on our own, then why would we send eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to there?
I would.
Who's saying we're going on our own?
Nobody said, we haven't decided if we're going with them yet.
Yeah. We should decide that before we will put the money out for that.
Did I miss something?
No, this is to pay for what we haven't really decided of what we're doing yet.
Okay, because that was all rolled into last week, that's why.
Yeah.
We came, we talked about the amount.
Right.
Okay, so that probably shouldn't have been put on our consent agenda to begin with.
Yes.
Because we haven't signed.
My bad, I was involved with that also. Joel's not here. Take that out of there or just take it out?
Um.
We can, that one right there is a separate motion, do we want to postpone that? I would suggest we postpone it.
Push that till next month? I would move it, move. I wouldn't. Move that we postpone the authorization of payment to QPAD and materials management until we go over it again next month. Run it through the committees, run it through, maybe the whole.
But doesn't that all need to be, he needs to have us sign it because they have to have it all in by July?
I just got off the phone with. The turn in, you got it on her. And she wants to have his Zoom meeting. Tracy, you pronounce her last name.
If she wants to have a Zoom meeting with us. Um, the later part of next week with her, uh, Eagle and different thing. You don't have to go in a piece.
It's Tracy's last name.
Purena Hedge.
Okay.
A recycling specialist.
Yeah. Nothing.
Um.
She's from the lower Michigan.
Yeah, she does, um, and then she said, um, she does seven counties in lower Michigan and U.P.
But nothing like this is done before, so she doesn't even know what it means.
That's exactly.
Or you're saying that going by ourselves, she's going to represent us and we'll pay her.
She will tell us what's involved with going by herself.
Meaning we have to have recycling, compost, all of that in our county.
No.
Why is she coming in right before we're supposed to do this? Where did she come from?
I don't know, she sent me an email. So I don't know.
When are you meeting with her?
She's on vacation. This week. Next week she wants to set it up with Eagle. And us. And let us know, since we're a small county. And what, actually Elton County does quite well on recycling with the city, we have one in Chatham, one in Graham Ray, one in Munising, I mean up in Wetmore. Recycling. Um, that money is not used. To implement or to actually implement it. For administrative. We can use it for. We already, we already, we already are implementing. Recycling.
Yeah, and if we. You do know that we're going to get sixty thousand and that's it.
Per year.
Per year.
For three years. Possibly, she says.
Yeah.
And then. Right now. With the way the QPAD drove up. We are totally open wind. We don't know how much we're going to spend, we got, and we don't have any say so on it. Because we only have three votes, it's not an equal county vote. We got Marquette with six. Us and School Craft only have two, the other three have four, Marquette's got six. So they're going to be, and you have businesses. Voting. On what tax payers are going to pay. That's not elected or nothing, them are businesses.
Well, I go to QPAD on Thursday, so if you have a list of questions and stuff that I can.
Is there a dude?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I called someone else speaking here there.
Yeah.
And I asked him the questions. It wasn't too.
He didn't have much.
No. That's the thing is, they don't have, they don't have no answers, but they want to sign a big contract.
Well, that's the thing too, is nobody has answers because Eagle, they haven't given us, the state hasn't given us anything.
Right.
So we have to have a plan.
Right, and that we can have a rough plan.
Wait, wait a minute, I think state has had a plan.
Right.
By July.
Well, they don't have a plan.
They don't have a plan yet. They don't know what they're, what they're even going to mandate us to have the plans, got to stay. So they're just throwing this out there. And that, she's going to answer the question, all of us.
Okay.
And that's what she said, I can get Eagle with us, everybody get together and hopefully, because she had, I had questions she couldn't answer.
Yeah, she couldn't answer. Yeah, she just couldn't answer too many of them.
Right, and she's the one who's supposed to be the. Person behind all this. So. Actually, I got one right now from Tracy, I just got emails to learn just now. But. Right, so. You have anything?
No, I got her name and such.
So I, we've, just to put some background on. That part. So we had a motion to a second to postpone it.
He made a motion.
I support.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, make you support it. Roll call.
Make you supported it?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's me.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yes.
Livermore.
No. Yes.
I'm like, yeah.
Always funny, I'm like, my head's in a different spot, yes, postpone it.
Commissioner Nettleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Seabird.
Yes. Maybe you should go downstate.
I'll just look into it so that the actual part one fifteen requirements are, because that's not even the original stuff.
Because when somebody comes out of nowhere this close to a big point that wants to turn us to go to buy ourselves.
Well, we just got. Any information out of it. They come and. Say it, you know, we, that's all through here.
Well, yeah, at the convention, those guys in Berrygar asked her a number of questions that she couldn't answer. Because the state isn't through with it.
No.
So we're going to pay eighty seven hundred dollars? For something we don't know?
That's six months.
I don't care.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, that's taxpayer money right there.
Minutes. We got, uh, committee of the whole April eighth and the board of April fifteenth. Anybody have any questions on those ones?
I didn't see anything that stuck out to me.
Motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Certainly. Roll call.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yes.
Livermore.
Yeah.
Nettleton.
Yes.
Rondo.
Yes.
Seabird.
Yes. Just future here, if I just do all As and all Ns, and if we do get an A, then do actually roll call that.
We're going to ask Joel, because there's something, I guess, or something they have to actually do.
Right.
Because I asked that too, it was like.
Uh, number nine, cost savings and revenues sources. Anybody?
Thank you, sir.
Revenue sources. Some things in Elton County. Number ten, unfinished business. Have any? The eleven resolutions.
Well, A would be taken off there.
Should be, yeah. Um, yeah, we got to have a motion to table that one.
Make a motion to table resolution A. Until next month.
I'll support. Roll call.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yes.
Livermore, yes. Nettleton.
Yes.
Rondo.
Yes.
Seabird.
Yes. B, resolution twenty twenty four dash for objecting to the acts, my tax proposal.
I support that. Any emotion?
Yeah, we have to preach one.
Motion to.
Yep, we each one.
Accept. Resolution B.
We have a motion, second. A second. Any? Questions? I'll say right now, I'm sorry. I'm for it, just as long as we have a different way of tax revenue for the county.
And they don't.
I don't, I don't like. Right.
Yeah.
This is just another way, if we had a different way of taxing where we could tap into the person rather than. Hostful. Having to pay for it. I think it would be good, but there's nothing in there. In their whole agenda of how they could even do it, so.
With that, with the, um, this is the whole state.
Yeah.
It would be a tourism tax, that would just be discounted.
Right, that's what I said.
You still have to pay, you're going to pay that in any of us.
Well, that's what I said, if they had some way for us to subsidize that tax, then I'd probably be for it, but there's no way.
Yeah, the group proposing the proposal has no viable alternatives to offer.
Right.
We'd look pretty silly passing it.
Forty-six percent of our funding, off the window.
Uh, roll call.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yes.
Livermore.
Yes.
Nettleton.
Yes.
Rondo.
Yes.
Seabird.
Yes. C, resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five, support, uh, maintain current service at Kingster, Kingsford, I think that happened.
It has, but I also see that I found the error in the agenda. Kingsford Michigan State Police.
Office, yep.
Yeah.
Post Hopkins.
Isn't that the same, I didn't change, did I change that?
We all missed it.
For last week?
No. Kingsford, Michigan Post Hopkins.
Kingsford, Michigan Post Hopkins.
Well, there we go.
I meant it to them.
It had, it's been paused. It has not been.
Right.
Stopped, they've agreed to post, they said, they'll hold off until January of next year.
I think we ought to send it anyway.
Yeah.
Still.
Yeah.
Motion?
I make a motion to support.
Another second there. Roll call.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yes.
Livermore.
Yes.
Nettleton.
Yes.
Rondo.
Yes.
Seabird.
Yes. And we have one proclamation. For community action month. Well, I'm not.
I don't really understand.
You open up a proclamation, next thing you know, everybody wants to send one to us.
Well, and, and I don't mind doing them when it's something we feel we should do.
And I guess, I'd rather if we feel we should do.
Yeah. If actually they sent it to us, it bothers me a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. So.
And we see a lot more unfortunately of him in other, yeah, in most county boards.
If I don't get a motion to approve it.
And they've been balls, and they've been. We're seeing a lot of negative.
Yeah.
People in Marquette County, I don't know exactly why, but that's. Yeah.
That's because they do so much in Elton County, in Arquette County. So there's a lot of hands and things and fingers and people talking.
Do we have a motion? Um, Dean, I'll make the motion, we remove it. A second? Roll call.
Commissioners Kappa Grossup.
Yeah.
Livermore.
Yeah.
Nettleton.
Yes.
Rondo.
Yes.
Seabird.
Yes.
Community reports. Anything?
Well. We have a. Finance.
Yep.
And, uh. Are, were we supposed to vote on that? Um, are we onto, well, okay. So when is that going to happen?
When Joel gets back and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I wonder what, I mean, so. I mean, I, I didn't miss it. It was great.
Like, any? Uh. Pilot song is almost done. Uh, Friday they had the floor, the last floor they had left to put in was like the little hallway. And I don't know if they put the floor in the bathroom or not, I don't know. But, uh, the walls were painted, the trim was up. So I imagine I have that chance to go up today, yet to see where they got today. It's doing good, guys have been rolling the field, I told the strips in wonderful condition at the moment, so. On June twelfth, I go to the township's zoning meeting to get our conditional use permit approved. They asked us to get one to allow the pilots to stay overnight, so. They are waiving their fees and not charging us anything for it, we just have to put out the pay for it. So. They like the way we're heading, so they want to help us with that. Also, the MDOT inspector was here, he passed with flying colors, he is also very happy inside into both what he's seeing the progress. And the direction things are going, so.
I heard you guys got some wifi up there.
We got some wifi up there.
Wow.
I was like, when are you getting out of my place?
Yeah, damn, Jen Knox ran the fiber optic cable for us. Should have been a six thousand dollar job, they waived it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so. That was huge. Thank you, because I forgot about that. Alrighty.
And, um, oh, I went to the conservation district meeting and.
Oh, I do have some.
I'll leave that. Go ahead. Anyway, um, we discussed it and I told them they should, um, get an agreement. Get a lawyer to look at it and then. We'll see where we go from there. And they're really, really happy about being able to take it over. So, and, um. There was a lot of good information at the, uh, convention. But the one thing about that management materials thing, they didn't have it. It was, you know, the guys at Berrygo were pretty disappointed that what are we signing if we're. We don't know what we're signing. And the state's coming from. And then. There's a lot, uh, some stuff, I just showed you, because the state is making. In three years, you, you spend that kind of money and get things going. It's going to be up to you. That's another mandate. And I'm, I'm really, right now, I oppose it. Big time.
Um, I had a meeting with the judges in Newberry, they're talking about, um, friend of the court mediator. That's for, he doesn't get any mileage. He drives for counties and never, he took over from the old one who. Yes, never asked for it, but he's like, it's just not, everybody else has mileage except him. So it was how, they're trying to figure out how to split that wage. And. I thought it should be, a couple of us thought it should be, um, by usage. You know, Elton County is only using once a week compared to another county using twice, go by that way. Or even twenty-five percent or, so it was.
I mean. It'd be a lot to try to keep track of like each time every month that small amount of money.
It's like seven thousand dollars a year. Um, my, I'm for rolling it into his wage. So he doesn't have to. Write it every week and kind of get a check cut separate every week for mileage, that just takes time on period, who's done doing their checks? Um, but how to split it up? Do our, do our judges get mileage? Yeah, I believe so.
I, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure we can, can we even do it that way?
I don't.
I think we have to pay mileage, that's why.
Yeah.
We can't put mileage as part of our.
No, it's not, put it into their pay, we just bump their pay and there is no mileage.
And they get no mileage in lieu of mileage.
Yeah. I thought that was big then, when we already, because we went through a lot to negotiate this.
Yeah.
To hire this, this individual.
Yeah, I didn't put that in there when. We were talking about.
I just, my whole thing was, this is your budget and not mine, that's what I told Nebel, you know, Beth was there asking, but. Told Judge Nebel, I said, this is your budget, this isn't, shouldn't be, I don't think it's really going to come with a commissioner, something that you got to find in your budget.
Yeah, I mean, they got three dollars and eighty-five cents we can left over. Now, when we negotiated all that, that was the time to.
Yeah.
He might, he might have to wait until it's time to open that contract back up again and then say, hey, look. I need to get this added in there, because, you know, we already negotiated, and that's, prosecutor said, we already negotiated the contract for the service.
It'll surprise how much that mediator does make. We went through a lot to get him there, like, that was four counties, Mackinac was really upset about it. They're the ones who actually called for the meeting. And then they didn't show up.
No.
Their lack of planning does not constitute our emergency. So.
Um, let's see, lots, so much stuff. Um, we had land bank in Brownfield. And if you want to help me here, I, I tell the good stuff. We have lots of money going towards, we got the grants for. Up in Wetmore. Um, we got two of them already down that were on twenty-eight and here in, on, and on Nona Township. Those two already cleared out. And right now we are this close to getting Tyoga.
No, I think, well, it's sent in, isn't it?
Yeah, they approved with, but there's just a couple more things we have to do, but they did approve it. So.
Yeah.
So. That's land bank. And everything seems to be. Really well there, I'm excited about all the cleaning up we're doing. Um, and then. We had a few updates about the fire hall and the marketplace, um. Just a few more things that we're talking about and. Getting around before we get some shovels in the ground, might be a little bit longer than the timeline, but we're working towards. Getting that done, we're going to meet with state land bank and. Some munising, DDA and township. And talk some more about what we can do. Otherwise, I DHHS and, let's see. They just are really looking for more funding for the foster families. That's one of the biggest things is the cost of everything that it costs us in our own homes with the taking care of foster kids. They just don't have enough money to make sure that. It seems everybody's got what they need. So hoping for some more funds there. Whereas, I think that's it?
Correspondence? I mean, so Matt, would this be a correspondence?
That's kind of what I was thinking. Otherwise, other than that.
Yeah, Matt sent a letter saying, and we just went through that, that, um, they're sending it on. Through orders review, they like, be on the meeting of the whole on June tenth, present. The board. I think that's it for this meeting.
Did you re-put what we had last week?
We went over correspondence last week. Four comments. Kelly. Uh, thank you.
I just got a question from the hand. How was that cell tower, how was that coming along? That you were talking about.
The one over in. East Cold Springs Road. Sam said that they approved the location. If the elevation's good, there's fiber optic out there, that's good. So now they're just waiting for it to come back, um, on the budget part, right?
Yeah.
Where's that at? I think it's East Cold Springs Road in Chatham, one sixty-seven.
Look at you smiling.
Yeah, it's a dead zone when you try to go to the co-op and Hobbie's like, hey, you still need this, I can't get the text.
And the other one, did they mention, um, marketplace, was that supposed to start right away or what happened with that?
They've had some bumps in the road, and so we're going to have a meeting, I think Dean's going to be, like Kelly and myself. We're meeting on it with the state land bank and the DDA. On Thursday morning at nine o'clock.
Wherever we have them.
I haven't gotten any information. On that part. I don't know if we're going to meet in person, it was supposed to be down at, uh. Kathy's office. And then she talked about a Zoom meeting, I'm not real sure.
If it's not dead.
No, it's not.
It's left, it's not dead.
The state land bank would like to really help us. Get some, get it, get back. Come and go with it.
Oh. And all along, Zach, and the idea?
I'll tell you after Thursday.
Oh.
Let you know at our next, uh, committee reports.
That's all I have. Good.
Um, compliments to the, uh. Uh, prosecution of. This guy in Graham Ray. Uh, not Rick Kappa Grossup, but, uh. We didn't know the guy's name. Who has a loaded gun. Walking down the snow, we didn't even know. We still, I mean, a lot of people didn't know it even happened, you know? Long after the fact. And Nick Paul's been doing a great job over there.
Good to know, awesome.
Okay. Yep.
Bad comments? The jury?
No, sir.
Bad? Bad comments?
I would just like to add that, just one property that I'm kind of happy about is the Village of Chatham property that. We have, we got over ninety thousand, they could keep, to get that all cleaned up.
Oh, good.
And then we do have so interested person that wants to put a distance there, and so we are moving forward on that direction.
Good.
Forgot to ask.
Steve?
I'm good, thank you.
Robbie? Uh, just a couple things, um, referencing what Commissioner Capagrosso said, we were able to achieve a conviction on a high profile case, our Graham Ray. Um, the conviction was to two-year felony for resisting a trucking a police officer, which scores out at zero jail time. And we were able to convince the courts that, uh, six months was the appropriate jail time and they agreed. So, uh, we consider that a victory in our circuit court, um, we're happy about that. The, uh, soil erosion thing, one of the things that we should consider, uh, that we have to keep in mind is. How do we prosecute violations of the soil erosion program? And that has been a sticking point in the past because it's very expensive when it comes to. People who are violating soil erosion are generally, people got a lot of money, um, and they're generally on the lake shore. And they're generally got their feet dug in, um, included, and other things dug in, apparently, so. We gotta, I'll meet with Matt and see if they have a plan going forward for the prosecution of those violations, it's not a criminal act. So it's not generally something that we would do in our office, but maybe we can do some kind of a partnership or something. Wow, but I'll meet with him before next meeting. And lastly, we have a jury trial on Wednesday for, um, disturbing the peace. So, rarely, I've never heard of this kind of charge going to a trial, um, we're very excited about it, it's, um. I think it's where an individual, uh, trespassed on a school bus and, uh, created a commotion on the school bus, so. Jury selection begins at nine, the proof was probably beginning around ten thirty if everybody's interested.
I got a question. Can they, can they, uh, uh, hold the building permit if they don't get the, uh. The other permit, there's.
I've never seen that, uh, those are generally two different things. Um, where you got.
No, because right now, you, they got it down to where you can't get a building permit unless you're okay for zoning and health department.
So you'd have to get your soil erosion. Permit, I guess, yeah, that makes sense then, yeah. Um, they're really easy to get, it's common, and it's not a big deal.
It's compliance.
Yeah, compliance.
Once you give the permit.
We had a case out on, um, Shore Drive in Shelter Bay, and guy basically. Put in something within five hundred feet, put in a road within five hundred feet of Lake Superior, and, um, can't do that without a specialized permit. And our building post department ordered him to remove the road, and, um, I don't know how it ended up. But the guy was dug in and we calculated the cost out, and it's like. Can't, it's tough, because I can't justify spending, you know, tens of thousands of dollars on soil erosion issue. When costs are up in the air, who's gonna end up paying for it if we, if we in fact win? So, um, that's what I wanna talk to Lockies about and see, it sounds like he's got attorneys. And if they can get grand funding to prosecute these things, that's the direction we should go. Rather than, you know, tying up our, uh, departmental resources.
It's that.
Sure.
Oh, there'd be.
Uh, if you're away from Lake Superior, there's a lot more we want to do.
Thing is, we have lots of lakes and streams going here and wetland, it doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be exterior, it's just any lake streams or wetland within five hundred feet.
I had to get a permit to cross a tiny little creek on my.
The tension we used to ride our bikes across.
Yeah.
Literally, it's like that.
I know, I said, this is nothing, this is, this is nothing, there's barely flowing water here, and Joe, Joe Soak said, yeah, get a permit for it. I would put in a, now there's a twenty, no, it's a thirty-six, it's a four there. But it's not that it's good, because I'm trucked it down. So, soil erosion, it's a lot of fun, looking forward to that.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
And it definitely look like no public comment, so, round to adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sex, sir.
Go ahead, Rick.
Okay.
Commissioners Capagrosso?
Yes.
Livermore?
Yep.
Nettleton?
Yes.
Rondo?
Yes.
Seber?
Yes.